Welcome and thank you for attending the regular board of education meetings scheduled for Monday, June 18th at seven o'clock. Sorry for the little delay. Please rise to the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call Kelly.
Swift, present. Seward, here. Suction, here. Mr. Kessky?
Here.
D'Arcy.
Excused.
Mr. Wob?
Yes.
Mr. Zoff?
Here.
Ms. Gadsden, present. Mr. White?
Here.
I'd like everybody to please rise again for a moment of silence for Mr. Colin Keenan, a bus driver for nearly two decades for the Beacon City School District, and for Mrs. Anne Marie Suzie Sweeney, who served more than thirty years as a bus driver for the Beacon City School District. So we have a very special workshop for tonight. We're going to be honoring the retirees and people receiving tenure. So Matt, you're going to have the building just come down.
Yes, yes, thank you all for coming tonight, and we are going to jump right into it. I'm going to call building administrators down to talk about people receiving tenure and people retiring from their building, and I'm going to start with Sheena Baez from Forrestal Elementary. Where is she?
Let me know.
You can do it right there. Okay. Okay. So I'm excited. I'm excited to really mention the three women in my building who are phenomenal pillars of support, not only for our students, but also for our families. I would like to start with Lillian Goldsman. She has dedicated her life to ensuring equity for our ENL students. She develops comprehensive lesson plans that really take into consideration the cultures that they're coming from. She shared her culture with them. She is a light in our building. Can we give a round of applause for Lillian Goldsman? I would also like to just take a moment to thank a very important woman. I know that our building could not run without her. Bernadette Hockler has dedicated her life for the health and well-being for our students. They all affectionately come to her. She has created the capacity for our entire building to be trained in EpiPen because one student had a severe allergic reaction. This is the type of woman and the type of dedication that she has for our staff. Can we give Ms. Bernadette Hockler a round of applause, please? And last, but definitely not least, my grandmother used to say, "When you're in the presence of greatness, you're supposed to give reverence." Carol Salvis has dedicated more than three decades of her life to ensure that students receive an equitable education. She has been a pillar for the Calico Ball, ensuring that students understood what the curriculum entailed. She has taken them on a journey to so many countries. Tomorrow, we welcome Japan, where she will, single-handedly, allow students to understand the culture in terms of the actual calligraphy writing. She has literally done so much at JV Forrestal, leading up our FACE Committee, which is our family, community engagement committee. She has helped us to co-develop our food pantry, to ensure that our most, our families in need are supported. Carol Salvis will forever be a pillar in JV Forrestal. Can we give her a round of applause? My phenomenal women, can you please join me here for your plaques? You deserve another one. We're going to start with Lillian Goldsman, Bernadette Hockler, and Carol Salvis.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Brian Archer, Principal Sergeant.
First of all, it's an honor to be up here.
We have one staff member who's up for tenure tonight.
I would like to start by recognizing our tenure recipients at Rombaut Middle School,
His name is Michael Werba. He's a teacher assistant.
so I will start with Amy Basely, who I do not believe is in attendance this evening.
He came to Sergeant four years ago. This is his second career. He's taught self-contained classes, kindergarten through third grade.
We were fortunate enough at Rombaut to get Amy as a TA from Lenham Elementary School, and when she first came to us, I think she was nervous about the transition from elementary
He has shown much growth over the years and demonstrates compassion for every student
to middle school, but now I don't think you could get her to leave, even if you begged her.
he has worked with, so I'm happy to present him with this tenure gift.
She has been a great fit with our seventh-grade staff, and it is an honor to recognize her this evening, so congratulations, Amy.
Thank you. Mike's not here.
For teachers, we have Vanise Stora, who's receiving tenure as well.
Hi, Brian Saltish.
Vanise, I was fortunate enough to be on her interview committee, so I'm actually getting to the point now in my career where I get to honor people for tenure who went through an interview process with myself, and she has impressed us from day one, being at Rombaut Middle School. She has taught eighth grade and currently teaches seventh grade math. An amazing teacher. Technology-wise, she's up on all the newest things. Google Classroom, she's using the Smartboard, the kids have the Chromebooks out. I've observed her twice this year for her APPR, and both times impressed with her classroom management and her willingness to take a risk and try new lessons. Absolutely a great find for Beacon, and I'm proud to stand here and honor her this evening. And she is not here either. Now that we are finished with tenure for Rombaut, we have one retirement at Rombaut, and I'm going to bring her down here. Come on down before I talk about you. Come on down, Mrs. Murphy. That way, if you want to kick me or hit me, you'll be close enough to get me. Georgina Murphy has been a Spanish teacher at Rombaut Middle School for the last thirty years. So we had a nice little chat today, because I wanted to make sure I didn't get anything wrong. So we discussed how she began her days in Beacon, and she told me, in the summer of 1988, that she was looking for a position, and she got a phone call, and I think the date was August 29th, and she was supposed to go in for an interview, and then they said, "Oh, you know, don't come in, because our certifications weren't set yet." So she said, "Okay." And then, three days later, as school was getting ready to open in September, she got another phone call, and they now wanted her to come in. And so she went through her interview process and wowed them, and the assistant superintendent by the name of Fred Mers at the time offered Mrs. Murphy a position, and she said that "If you hired me, I'll stay around for a while." Well, a while turned into thirty years, all at Rombaut Middle School. And when I tell you she's going to be a great loss for us, she's someone that our current, that former students come back to visit constantly. So, Miss Murphy, for a little lady, has a big voice. If you've ever been in the Rombaut Middle School hallways or the classroom, and you could be a couple classrooms down when she does her deo, you know when Miss Murphy is talking, and you know exactly what Mrs. Murphy's expectations are. And what I will tell you about Mrs. Murphy is she, for that tough shell she puts out there, is one of the nicest, most sincere, most compassionate people that we have in our building. She runs our Sunshine Committee, organizes all of our staff events, speaks at the end of the year, each year, about the teachers who are retiring in front of our entire staff, where she puts together a beautiful presentation to honor and pay respect to their careers. I will tell you that she did write this one thing, and it says, "As I leave, the one thing that I wish for is this: that the teacher who replaces me comes to love the students as much as I have, that they realize what a special place Beacon is, how the colleagues here become family, most important they should know, and foster the great spirit that your students have." And that sums it up for her. And the one last thing I'd like to let you know about Mrs. Murphy is, this year was the first year we got our Washington, DC trip off the ground, and Mrs. Murphy came to me as we were talking and discussing students that, you know, we were worried about being able to go on the trip or not go on the trip, and she fronted the entire portion for a student to go on that trip. Now, she didn't want anybody knowing that, but she came to me... I know. I hope you're not recording this. She came to me with the money to pay for a child to completely go on that fabulous trip. Now, that student doesn't know that she did that, but that's the type of person that we are now losing from Rombaut Middle School, so she's going to be greatly missed. We congratulate you and enjoy your retirement.
Did you say something?
I'm going to hear it.
People of Beacon opened up their hearts for me, and it was with great joy that I took the job, and I met my words. I went to stay around for a little while. Every one of my students come to me when they see me, and they say, "Do you remember my name?" No. I've taught three thousand of your students. But what I do remember is a smile, a wink, a nod of the head, and I can say, "You were the one that answered most of my questions, I got most of my sarcastic jokes." Or, "You're the one that I had to corner in the back of the room, because you didn't stop talking." Ladies and gentlemen, I want to say thank you for the privilege of teaching these students.
Okay, Tom O'Neill and Samuel Sims from the high school.
I would like to start by acknowledging the retirement of one of our TAs. Her name is Rebecca Cole. She has served as a teaching assistant in the Beacon City School District for thirty-one years. She has served in various schools, and most currently, she has been a wonderful support in our ADL classes at BHS for the past six years. We are thankful for her services and dedication to our students. We wish her the best in her retirement and all future endeavors. Ms. Rebecca Cole, I don't believe she's here. We also are fortunate to have four TAs that have received their tenure this year. I'll start out with Ms. Regina Glenn. She has served as a teaching assistant in the Beacon City School District for five-plus years. Ms. Glenn has been a wonderful addition to BHS. She brings cheer and a warm smile in all that she does as she works closely with many of the teachers and students at BHS. She is also an excellent baker. It is with much pleasure that we announce her tenure. She can come down. She has also been a teaching assistant within the ENL department at Beacon High School for four-plus years. She works very closely with Ms. Lieberstein. She has a passion for the work that she does, and we are also very delighted that she has received her tenure at this time, so can you come down? And last but not least, Ms. Gail Quackenbush has served as a teaching assistant in the Beacon City School District for four-plus years. Most currently, she is working with the teachers of the STEP program here at BHS. Ms. Quackenbush is always willing to assist and support her class, and we are very happy to announce her tenure. I do not believe that she is here right now, but we'll give her a round of applause. Now, Mr. Tom O'Neill.
I'm here to talk tonight about a tenure position for one of our speech and language pathologists, Celine Rosario. So Ms. Rosario's worked at the capacity of a speech and language pathologist at the high school and our ADL classroom over at the middle school. She has a passion for continual learning. Every time you talk to her, you can see the excitement exude from her regarding new research that she's learned or conferences she's gone to. She has a desire to ensure that she's implementing practices in her therapy that are relevant, updated, and research-based. She's been an integral part of that student-directed IEP process that we came to you several months back to talk to you about. Initially, her work was going to be working with one of our students in the ADL classroom to do the filming, but then she came to me and she said, "Nope, I'm taking a student up on my own." And she did. And it was an amazing experience, sitting in on that annual review meeting and seeing this young lady run her whole entire CSE meeting, and looking at Ms. Rosario for guidance with just some subtle prompt, so there was a level of trust and respect between Ms. Rosario and the student, and that's something you can't learn from a book or go through a conference. It's just through full dedication and commitment to her students. She also makes sure that students are celebrated and recognized for all the work that she's doing. I have no reservations for the recommendation of tenure for Ms. Rosario.
Good evening. I'm here to talk tonight about a tenure position for one of our speech and language pathologists, Celine Rosario. So Ms. Rosario's worked at the capacity of a speech and language pathologist at the high school and our ADL classroom over at the middle school. She has a passion for continual learning. Every time you talk to her, you can see the excitement exude from her regarding new research that she's learned or conferences she's gone to. She has a desire to ensure that she's implementing practices in her therapy that are relevant, updated, and research-based. She's been an integral part of that student-directed IEP process that we came to you several months back to talk to you about. Initially, her work was going to be working with one of our students in the ADL classroom to do the filming, but then she came to me and she said, "Nope, I'm taking a student up on my own." And she did. And it was an amazing experience, sitting in on that annual review meeting and seeing this young lady run her whole entire CSE meeting, and looking at Ms. Rosario for guidance with just some subtle prompt, so there was a level of trust and respect between Ms. Rosario and the student, and that's something you can't learn from a book or go through a conference. It's just through full dedication and commitment to her students. She also makes sure that students are celebrated and recognized for all the work that she's doing. I have no reservations for the recommendation of tenure for Ms. Rosario.
Good evening. Tonight, we have one faculty member who is receiving tenure, this young lady, Ashley McEwen. Ashley joined the faculty staff at the high school in 2015 with a tremendous amount of energy, and three years later, it's amazing that you still have those energy with more children and taking care of all our children here at school, so amazing how you can do that. But this year, on top of the classroom endeavor, she's also the junior class advisor, who just, right now, not a month, or a month ago, she was just completing just a fabulous evening at the junior prom that just went out without a glitch, and she just did a super job. So the wonderful thing about Ashley is that she makes connections with not only her own kids, and as a junior advisor, she's able to, the whole class knows her and goes to her, so it's a special person who can do that just beyond the classroom. But in the classroom, I think it's important to note that there's an inclusion setting that Ashley teaches special ed. She's with a gentleman who wasn't used to actually doing too much of that, and they have made a great team, because when you go in there, if you're able to get a dynamic skill of one teacher and then have another one join in, and their chemistry can grow, you are now getting, you know, two for the price of one, and the students, you know it's going well, when the students don't recognize, you know, who's the boss and who's the person second, all right, because they play so well off each other. And so I'm really, you know, thankful that she's grown in that role, and she's just been a great asset, so congratulations on your tenure. Just expecting your energy to give some downtime with the kids over summer, come back with that energy for the senior advisorship, right? So, Ashley McEwen. The next gentleman that we are going to recognize tonight is retiring. We have one teacher retiring in high school this year, and his name is Roger Weiss. You might not even know Roger Weiss, because he's so, one of those guys that just goes under the radar, comes in and does his job, day in and day out, and as a matter of fact, he did it for thirty years. So he was at the high school, just making life, you know, bringing to life chemistry. And I spoke to Roger just the other day, and I said, "Roger, what are you going to miss about teaching?" And he said, "You know, the thing I'll miss most is that I always challenged myself," because I knew chemistry for a lot of people just is not something, it's not their favorite things to do and to go to and to learn, "but I love the challenge when they first started, they hated it, to seeing that they were able to understand chemistry through the applications, this world, really how he brought real world into his classroom." And he was able to do that, and think about thirty years back in the traditional day of teaching, for him to still, you know, be able to do that and create himself again, even with this year's group, who just respond to him, just like, you know, he's a chipper, you know, just out of college. So a gentleman who's, you know, is going to enjoy retirement, because, some of you might not know this, maybe some of the students might know this, that he plays in a band, and he plays in the bunkhouse, what's it, the Bunkhouse Boys? That's what they call them, the Bunkhouse Boys. And he's an accomplished fiddler, so he's going to be out doing that, and as a matter of fact, I did look and see that June 29th in Woodstock, he's playing, so it's a plug for you, Roger. You're not here tonight, but we're going to give you the opportunity to have people go see you. But we're going to miss Roger, and a class guy, and a wonderful teacher. The last gentleman who we're going to recognize here tonight is a guy who had a brief disagreement with retirement. His name is Dr. John Severding. He came to us after being retired for a very short period of time, and I don't know if it's his wife or himself realizing that, "I got so much more to give." And so, Dr. Severding, really was what the doctor ordered for us at the time, as we had a revolving door of administration, you know, so many years ago. He brought stability to this building, to the district, the respect that he came in, based on his experience. He has his experience alone, he's a wealth of knowledge of coming in, and so he had some plans, because he was inheriting some things that, you know, he could figure out, and he loved to figure things out. He was a planner, taskmaster, who really just went after it bit by bit, and just, as a team, brought people in and said, "How are we going to do this?", and we went about doing it. And so, he's in a lot of accomplishments, I'm not going to sit here and stand here and list all of them, but I think we do have to recognize the fact that this district, this high school, was put in on a focus group, which means the state says that we're not getting the job done with regard to people graduating and the percentage that we need to have happen. And by, when John was here, just beginning, it was around seventy-four percent, and we needed to get to eighty, otherwise you'd be a focus school, and then things could happen that could make things a lot more difficult for us. But John took that challenge, and he had a plan, and he worked the plan, and his group and his faculty and his staff and kids responded, and many years later, eight years later now, we've been off-focus for many years, but it continues to rise, the percentage of graduation. And he believes it to be, and I think we all recognize, the staff around him, recognizing that. It was a slow process, because the middle school coming in had a lot of students sometimes who just weren't being successful, but they still had to come to the high school because of their age. You can't just leave fifteen, sixteen-year-old people down with eleven, twelve-year-olds. But, so, we inherited this situation, but John came up with an idea where we could team them, and we could get them to, you know, where they were academic, where they were disciplinary, where there were attendance issues. He put it all into one, wrapped them in, provided a team for them, where they could be successful, and put the task on them. They had to come during the summer and be at boot camp and understand, okay, September comes around, this is what we expect. And by having the team and having people work together, it took years of time, those kids became sophomores, juniors, and seniors, so they, at first, maybe weren't getting all the credits for to gain that freshman number to get to sophomore, but they had enough so that they can move into, by senior year, they were able to graduate with their cohort. And that's how John was able to get the percentage up. So kudos to him and that major part, but John did so much for the school other than that. But the morale, brought up morale, the school climate was a little bit lacking and brought it back with a lot of activities for us and everybody engaged in. But also, you know, he also had a sense for school safety, you know, when it was before, it really became something, he did a nice job putting together a packet, I think the district still uses that packet, that he really is a main person who put it together. But now, with a lot of people offering more, you know, updated information, where it's going to be a great plan that we're going to facilitate for the following school years. But to John Severding, if you do end up having another disagreement with retirement, I'm certain that someone's going to call you very quickly, because you are an asset to wherever you're going to go. But thank you for all you've done, for me personally, for the staff, the high school, and for the district, because you're missed, and we love you a lot. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you again to the board and for the superintendent to continue this practice of celebration, because oftentimes, we are working very hard, day in and day out, and we don't take a moment to celebrate the hard work that people are doing, so congratulations, everybody, so far. This is a bittersweet moment for me. I've had the privilege of working with Mrs. Kate Hines as a building principal, where she held CSE meetings at Lenham School, and then recently, for the past two years, in the PPS role. I remember way back, I heard about Kate Hines from other directors, like, "Who is Kate Hines?", but I'm hearing about this phenomenal teacher over at the high school. Kate started her educational career in 1998, and then came to the high school in 2002. In that role, I've learned over the past couple years, she was an integral member of being the specialty content coordinator, where a lot of the staff members would go to her for guidance and direction. And when she switched over and took the role as a CSE, CPSE person, she brought a lot of that knowledge over to her current position. Kate has a unique quality that exemplifies continual professionalism, advocacy for all students, and the desire to continually learn, to ensure that she's supporting students, parents, and the department. We often talk about the need to have superhero powers on our Friday debriefing sessions when we're a little overwhelmed and giddy, but I figured out Kate's superpowers, and it's her ability to effectively communicate with various stakeholders. She follows up with parents, teachers, and agencies in a timely manner, which reduces the impact of unresolved issues. Kate has the ability to run meetings that are detailed and ensures that all members are heard. Kate has been an integral part of the PPS department, and in the past two years, has been a pillar of strength and support as I transitioned into my role as director. Kate, your teachings will forever be treasured, your contribution in PPS and in my life will never be measured, and I will dearly miss you. never be measured, and I will dearly miss you.
Alright, next we have Anne Marie Corderoni to speak about transportation.
Thank you. I'd like to speak for Ron Mackey, who's our transportation supervisor. One of the moments of silence today was for Anne Marie Sue Sweeney, her wake is tonight, so he's not available. Also, the person I'm honoring is also there, but I'd like to honor her retirement. Tonight, we'd like to acknowledge Sandy Condaleski's retirement as a bus driver. She drove for the Beacon City School District for 32 years. In fact, when she started driving for the school district, there were no photos on the driver's license. Sandy Condaleski was hired in October of 1986. At that time, her sons were young boys, and it seemed like a good job for a mom. Since that time, she's not only given us 32 years of driving, but her son has also been driving for us for 11 years. Sandy is dedicated to the children on her bus, and loved them like they were her own. She was well-liked by her coworkers, and always lent them a sympathetic ear. One of Sandy's strengths is her ability to get along with just anyone. As bus drivers, our folks get up pretty early in the morning. Sandy has covered all types of bus routes in the district, and most recently, had one of the earliest runs for a long time, starting her run between 5:30 and 5:45 a.m. Perhaps one of the biggest challenges I faced is learning to spell Sandy's last name. Seriously, though, one of the greatest challenges a transportation director is finding the time to let people know just how much you appreciate their work. As a demand-driven industry, we often have to focus on solving problems, and being able to really thank people for what they do every day, sometimes just doesn't find its way into your busy day. So tonight, on behalf of the six preceding supervisors she's had, as well as her fellow employees, but most importantly, on behalf of the students, I'd like to thank you to Sandy for many years of service she's given the district. And I have one other. I'd like to honor Joanne Boyle, who is a secretary in our district. We would be honoring her tonight on her retirement. She planned on retiring in July, but she unexpectedly passed away on May 11. Joanne began working for the district on August 30th, 1982. She was one of the longest-tenured employees in the district. She was set to retire in July on her 62nd birthday, with just shy of 36 years working in the district. In 1982, when Joanne joined the district, she was working as a stenographer in the Old Beacon High School on Fishkill Avenue. She worked for the principal at that time, George Billups. In the 1990s, she worked in the district office for the director of curriculum, Fred Mers. Later in the 90s, she worked at Roundabout Middle School for Principal Edmund Carey. In 2001, she returned to the district office and began working in PPS for the then-director, Dr. Jean Parr. In 2003 and 2004, she worked for the principal of the Beacon Academy, James Cormer. In 2005, Joanne returned to district office and worked in the PPS department with Directors Lynn Pample, Frank Mulherns, Cecilia Dancerol Romly, and most recently, Dawn Candello. A collection was performed, and donations have been made on behalf of Joanne, and we will give you further information to do that. We can all agree that Joanne was a valued employee, and is greatly missed. Thank you.
We have one more tenure recognition to do. Don Candello, you took a risk a couple of years ago. I always admire people who do that, when they are safe and secure in a longstanding position. You were the principal at Glennum Elementary for a number of years. You took a risk for the district to take over the director of PPS, and we really appreciate that, because in that time, you have brought a lot of, sort of, the director of PPS is an interesting job, because you have to be really compassionate and caring and student-centered, but you also have to bring a lot of structures and order and procedures, and you've managed to do both of those things really well. I think your leadership around the student-led IEPs exemplifies your broader vision of leadership, that it's always about the students. And I also would be remiss to mention that your car, I think, is the last one to leave most nights. And I know that, because sometimes I have to come back to the building for a meeting, or because I forgot something, and you're still there. And so, just, I really want to show a lot of appreciation for the time, compassion, care, and leadership you've brought to the director of PPS. And, is this, is this what they get? Can you get this? I just want to say thank you so much for everybody who came tonight. And I think what's really cool, I'm just gonna mention a couple of retirees here, is I've had really great talks with some of them, and so I just want to thank some of the retirees for taking the time in their last year. And Lillian, we're meeting tomorrow, I saw on my calendar, so, for taking the time to try to break in a new superintendent, and, you know, share some of your knowledge with me. So, I appreciate the meeting we had, and the meeting we had. It means a lot to me, and thank you for everyone who's here tonight. And this is my first one of these, so the next thing we do is we get to, oh, no, no, I'm sorry. Board president always goes last. We have some board recognitions to, I am sorry, I was just ready to.
So you were thanking them for breaking you in, but they had a lot of experience breaking into superintendents and prior to you came. So, these are employees of the district, but they do dedicate a lot of time to the district. They don't get paid beside their heartburn and headaches that come with the position. So I'd like to welcome, this is the first time that three incumbents didn't rerun for the school board. So we have three people that are not, that are with us tonight, that are not gonna be with us after July 2nd. So I thought it was important to recognize. First one is Georgia. Georgia's been on the board for nine years. She came on the board in 2009. She's a graduate of Beacon High School, so she was born and raised here, and she still dedicated her time to the board and to the district, even though her son graduated last year. So Georgia, come up, we got a little plaque for you. The second board member is Kenya Gatsin. Kenya Gatsin and I joined the board together in 2014. Kenya has made her presence known. She's been on several committees. She chaired the PR committee this past year, she's been the vice president for two years. Georgia, I was remiss to say, she's been chairperson for the policy committee for, what, last three years?
Yes.
Last three years. Kenya, you definitely know what she's thinking. You'll know if she agrees or disagrees with you, and that's what I love about her. She definitely can take our conversations one way or the other, but we have learned to love each other in our role in volunteering on the board. And I think the board, she brings really good insight in her time here, and she definitely gives a different perspective that's needed to the board. And the board is gonna be missing you, Kenya, so. So our third board member, I can't put down all the years, it's been 24 years that Bill served on the Board of Education. So I did do a little timeline here, Bill, so just bear with me. So Bill first ran for the Board of Education in 1993. There were 11 people running for the Board of Ed, and he didn't win. So in 1994, he tried again, and he won. There were seven people running, and he was one of the, became one of the trustees of the board. Bill has worked with administration on adding sports back to the district, which were cut in 1992. He was on the board when the sports were introduced back into place. He helped the public garner some support for Sergeant J.B. Forrestal Glennum and Roundabout Schools. He worked on the plans of the new high school in 2002 when it was built, and you'll see his name all over the district on plaques, because he was probably on the board when the building was built. He assisted with the planning and the improvements in the curriculum, including the AP classes and the Dutchess Community College classes. As a member of the policy committee, he was involved in rewriting many of the policy and the policy manual. He was a board president for six years, and a vice president for five years. And he's, the last six years, he's been Dutchess County School Boards Association rep for the Beacon City School District. So Bill, because you made over the 20-year mark, close to 25, we got you a certificate. We also got you something that I hope you will display with pride. It's a little glass weight that you could display, and it just reads, "Dedicated service, presented to William Alzoff, and a recognition of the milestones you've achieved and the accomplishments you've earned. Thank you for giving so much time and loyalty and dedication to the Beacon City School District." Bill, thank you. And now we can go to the cafeteria?
Cafeteria.
Cafeteria.
You're all invited to have cake.
Alright.
And we're coming too, right?
We are going.
Alright, see you at cafeteria. I need a motion to adjourn to execute a session to review the claim issued to particular individuals, and to discuss collective bargaining with the Beacon Professional Association and the board, who will be returning approximately at 8:30 p.m.
Sub moved.
Mike, is it a second? Kenya?
Bill.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Alright.
Pose. Motion carried.
Thank you for your patience. We do have some corrections to the agenda. We do have 12.01 is an item to the agenda. And we do have, we're gonna add 12.02, which is going to state, be resolved that the Beacon Board of Education hereby denies the Beacon Teachers Association's grievance dated of That will be resolution item 061818A. We also have some corrections to the instructional list, which is... 11.07. And it should say number 7 after number 8. Oh, the start date is gonna be 6/25/18. And we have three additions to that list. 19 is going to be Lisa Emling, 20 is Jim Fisher, and 21, Nicole Butler. Any other corrections or adjustments to the agenda? Seeing none, just note the changes when we do the vote. Alright, do we have any student or school presentations? Any parent groups? Dennis, you wanna come up for public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
You didn't say my comment, did you?
No. Dennis, do I have to get the clock out? Is it gonna be longer than four minutes, or?
No, no, I, no, I'm just gonna bring some things to your attention that you might not be aware of. I found out through people who like me. Before I do that, I just want to invite everybody to July 4th at that City Hall, 11 o'clock in the morning. People have a misconception that this is a city-sponsored event. It is not a city-sponsored event. The city of Beacon gives us not so much as 10 cents towards this event. It is all our committee. The reason why it's held at City Hall, because that's where business is conducted. That's why we have it there. Enough of that. With your lockdown drills that you've had recently, some things didn't go right. Let me tell you a few things. Constructive criticism at best. Doors are being left open. Teachers sitting at their desks when a lockdown drill's going on. So, if you say, if you say that, and that's what's going on, or that's what happened, and then, so how do we, in the event of something was the real to happen, how do we get those doors from being opened? Because it's evident that the teachers are going out the doors and not caring what, they're closing the door behind them. It's happening right here in the school. So if they don't care, who cares? Right? That's how they're getting in. They'll shoot their way in. That's how they're getting in. And once they're in, and you got a lockdown drill going on, and no one knows about it, because everybody's outside, and the door's open, and no one's paying attention, it becomes a little bit nasty for some lawsuits, I guess, I don't know. Plus the, you know, whatever you gotta, you know, whoever's not around anymore. But just a few things to tell you that I wanted to tell you. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. We do appreciate the insight and the constructive criticism.
Thank you.
Anybody else wanna public comment? Alright, committee reports, including board comments. No?
First, I just want to congratulate everyone who retired and got tenure tonight. I have had some of those teachers in the past, and I have Ms. Royce right now, so I wish them all the best in the future. I want to congratulate all the seniors graduating on Saturday, David Lewis, and all of the new classes coming up. I know it'll be a good year next year. The APUSH, Advanced Placement U.S. History class, had a trip to New York City today. We went to the 9/11 museum, and then from 9/11, walked down to the ferry at Battery Park to go to Ellis Island. So that was a very good trip. We were supposed to have it back in Vegas, and we had that very bad storm that came through, so all of the students were very excited about that trip. And we just got back, as the meeting was starting, so that was good timing there. So, yeah, that's all I had.
Alright, thank you. Anything exciting over the summer?
No, just 5K bargaining.
For to raise money?
Yeah, the 5K is going, August 18th is this year. Where are you riding to go, where are you shooting, Cancer Foundation?
Very good. Great, thank you. Mike?
Okay, for the Facilities and Operations Committee, we had our meeting June 13th. So the architects had come and presented us with their initial cost estimate from our construction supervisor. So, initial estimates show that we can do all the work that we had originally planned within the current budget. There are some items that, as they've been developing their plans and talking to the school administrators, that, you know, we have kind of an additional list, in case when the final bids come in, that we have some of, you know, some additions to that scope. They are currently developing the construction documents, which are supposed to be completed by the end of July, and then they'll be submitted to the state for review first part of August, which should be, you know, sometime in November. We're trying through an expedited routing in order to be able to be able to be able We're trying through an expedited routing in order to be able to be, hopefully get the approvals in November from the state. And that will set us up very well for being able to go out for bid and getting, you know, the best proposals that we can for the work, which actually starts, you know, only a year from now, so it's not really that far away. So we're, I think we're set up very well for a success in that area. We are also, we also talked about the Altairist Report, which is the, the security report that assessment that was done in the district. And we're putting together a list of items that, you know, capital-wise or facilities-wise that we should be done. There's a number that are gonna be done over the summer, in the course of the year. Some that are gonna be hopefully done with the technology budget, but then there may be some that we might put a, a capital project together. And, so we'll have a plan of what we wanna do if we want, if we wanna move forward. I did wanna reiterate what Noah had said. A lot of the teachers are for kids' head, and it was really, I mean, just seeing them and hearing about them brought back very good memories about interactions we had and the teacher meetings and the kids brought home, so. So congratulations to all the retirees. And that's it.
Thank you, Mike. Meredith?
Also, I want to say congratulations to tenure recipients and retirees. So it's a fun meeting to hear the great people we have working here, the dedication. Today was the Curriculum Committee meeting, and we met with John Giametta, Director of Athletics, and he kind of talked us through his plan for a revised curriculum for phys-ed. And it's exciting. It's really, I think it's, there's a lot of work to do to really flesh it out, but I think the ideas are super great. These, the same sixth grade will be focused on personal challenge and collaboration, and then working that through the middle school, ninth grade, giving kids an opportunity to really think about health-related fitness. And then 10th grade, active lifestyle. That actually sounds like it could be really cool with, maybe you were talking about like getting snowshoes and kayaks and, you know, really sort of thinking out of the box and allowing every student to find something they liked about being, you know, having a healthy lifestyle. I see Emery sweating over the... We'll get there.
We have.
We, everyone just start collecting snowshoes when you see them in a garage. We'll work it out.
You'd think it's our own money for guys.
But it, but it was exciting to hear someone, you know, really thinking about that every, every student is different, every student is gonna attach themselves to this idea in a different way, but this is important for every student. And, and what we really want kids to leave the district with is having figured out how they wanna stay healthy. Whether that be, you know, what'd he say, get jacked? Or... Or just, you know, something a little bit less intense. But, and then in 11th and 12th, he wants to kind of help kids to feel like it's more elective-based rather than like, this is, you know, this is the curriculum that you're going through. He seemed to be addressing the issue of, there's a lot of kids who are, do not wanna be in the pool with, you know, in a co-ed situation, so sort of kind of removing that intense problem there. And then, but aquatics will no longer be required, but in fact, trying to introduce it earlier so that kids will want to do it, which seemed like a good approach. And, what else? I mean, I also heard from a library media teacher about curriculum writing this summer, which is exciting because their, their role will be changing a little bit at the elementary level, so that's seeing people write on time. And it sounded like there were some policy issues with library that, and we'll get you, George, and then, now your problem. Somebody else's problem, but we will, we can address that later.
Alright, thank you. Craig?
Well, congratulations again. I particularly appreciated some recognition for our unsung heroes who are the bus drivers. You may have noticed that we have one of our buses parked at the sergeant entrance with a big sign on it saying, "We're looking for more help in that department." And that, we've heard before that it's been necessary to put everybody on the road who could legally drive in order to fill up the requirements. I think we're getting kind of down to the point where we need to take these kind of stronger actions, and if anybody has the opportunity to put the word out there that we have openings and are looking to build our list and including substitutes and so on, that'd be greatly appreciated. We need those folks. During the past week, I had the opportunity to take a tour of the CTI facility. That is the Career and Technical Institute, which is on the Salt Point campus of the Dutchess County Board of Cooperative Educational Services. And I say the whole name instead of just Bosse's to remind you that it is cooperative and we are a part of it. The reason that they're giving tours was to familiarize some of the local board members with the situation that they're in and the plans that they have to try to go forward with a region capital program to improve that facility, including the alternate high school that they have and rented facilities elsewhere in Poughkeepsie. That building that we send our students to is built in 1971, and it looks like it because it has not had a major overhaul in all that time. A little quick math tells you that that is a long time for a building that gets used day in and day out by students who are doing technical things like hammering and drilling and sawing and welding and spraying chemicals around people's hair. You know, it's, it's just, it really needs some work. I don't begrudge them their desire to do this. You might recall that about nine years ago, this went up for a public vote and got shot down. Interestingly enough, because the landlord of the business park where Bosse's has its salt and high school took out a full-page ad in the Poughkeepsie Journal telling everybody that horrible things were gonna happen to their taxes if that thing went through. Well, it wasn't that horrible. So, let's hope that we get some straight information through to the public, that they will be coming to us looking for a, a vote on a financing mechanism. There are a couple of alternatives, and they're looking for support for the cheaper of the two. So that's kind of a no-brainer. We'll be hearing more about this as, as we go on. So, I just wanted to get people thinking already about this CTI facility at Salt Point, and yes, it is a 45-minute drive.
Thank you, Craig. Kristen?
Again, just echoing the congratulations to all the retirees and tenure recipients. I don't have a longness committee report. I do just wanna use my comments to thank our leaving board members tonight. I think that we've, you know, it's definitely not a secret that it's been a bumpy few years here in Beacon, but as people who are considering running, I met with some people who were considering running this year, and it hit me like a panic, all of a sudden, like, they weren't a part of the search. They weren't in that room with us when we found a superintendent, and they weren't in that room with us when we hashed out a lot of, you know, tricky things that we had to go through. And I think that the best outcome is if you've disagreed with people or you've gone through, you know, a challenging time, is if you can kind of respect, you don't always have to like everybody, but I do, I can say I genuinely like everyone, and, and I have a lot of respect for everything you guys did and your reasons for doing it, and so thank you so much. I will miss you.
Well, you won't miss me, I'll be out there now.
I will miss you in this capacity.
So Georgia, the final policy committee update?
So basically, we're still trying to roll over policies, so Kelly's got the list.
Point of view on this agenda, so.
So I, I wanted to also thank the tenure recipients and the retirees, but also thank you, Kristen, for those words. And yes, although it may have been some bumps along the way, I think we had a lot, a lot of good laughs and a lot of respect was formed. But I do wanna say thank you to Bill, because he was there when I was appointed to the Board first, before I ran, so I thank you for guiding me. Well, it was nine years ago. And Kenya, you are the strongest advocate for students that I know, so I know you'll continue to do great things. And thank you.
Thank you, Georgia. And Bill?
Okay.
Hasn't sat in yet, Bill? What are you gonna do, like, for two Mondays a month?
Carl, I'm not saying...
I don't know. My wife will kick me in the house, though. She says, you know, get out and, go do something.
Well, the two Mondays a month and the first Thursday of the month.
Yes, exactly. I attended the Dutchess County School Board Association meeting, and somebody else will do that from now on. It was a, the talk was called Pathways to Graduation. It was given by Cora Stempel, who was the Dutchess County Bosse's Deputy Superintendent. It was a talk about all the different ways that students can achieve, you know, your Regents diplomas, your standard diplomas, et cetera, et cetera. Went through, it was quite, quite my opener, because a lot more options than you might, might think. So I thought that was very interesting. When I get an electronic copy of the information, I will pass it on to the board members so you can see that as well. And Craig, thank you for mentioning about Bosse's housing, also mentioned that, that, you know, I had gone up nine or 10 years ago when they, when they first tried to pitch leaving their rental property and, and building a, a facility. And it was back then, it was still, you could see that it needed, it needed, you know, it needed work. And so here it is, it's like nine or 10 years later, and nothing's changed. And so it's, it is a shame, because it's all of our students who we, we send up there who are, could take advantage of some of these, some of these improvements. So just, you know, keep that in mind that it's, you know, ultimately it'll become, if, if all of the, the boys in Dutchess, Dutchess County, if all the school districts approve of it, then it'll, it'll, it'll have a certain financial cost to it. And of course, it's ultimately up to the, to the, to the public of Dutchess County to actually vote on it. Hopefully, they'll have an informed decision, and, and they also understand that it's, you know, everybody thinks, oh, that's not my school district, but it is. It's, you know, a lot of our, our kids go there. And so it's, it's hurting our, our students if we don't support them, not only here, but also up at Bosse's. And if you'll indulge me, I have a little, little farewell. I just wanted to try to write something that wasn't too maudlin or maybe sound like a bleeding heart liberal, so. It's hard not to, when you're involved in public education, you know what I'm saying? So I just wanna say thank you to all the fine Beacon Board of Education members, you know, some of you are all here, as well as all at once in the past, the superintendents, the administrators, the teachers, and the staff that I have the privilege of working with during my time at the Board. It is all your dedication, hard work, and taking on additional responsibilities when needed, as we've all sometimes had to stretch a little bit, which has kept the school district moving forward. I also want to special thank you and shout out to some of the former board members, Debbie Shears, Mike Reel, and Ed Tucker, who mentored me and Mike early years on the Board. Also would be remiss if I didn't give a large thank to my wife Florence, who was kind of yelling at me for mentioning her name, or for putting up my weekly absences for 24 years and her attending and taking care of, of my five kids during that time, because, you know, it's a lot of work on her part. Her support was vital to me, giving me the ability to focus on the Board and not have to worry about my, my kids, you know, every time I was at the Board meeting. And a final message to my fellow incoming Board members. Public education is one of the most important components of a free and democratic society. It allows all children to be given a chance to become productive citizens regardless of where they start in life, at least in theory. I mean, it doesn't always work in practice, but it presents an opportunity for anyone to bet their lives, giving hope which is necessary for a democratic society. Many of our government officials seem to have forgotten this and take actions which weaken our public educational system by eliminating needed resources, diverting them to non-public forms of education, and they've also burdened those schools with well-intentioned regulations and testing requirements, but without the input of the professionals who inhabit and work on our educational system. We need to press our government officials to give us the resources and breathing room to let us work together as a team in bettering our students' learning process. However, local decision-making, as we do here, you know, week in and week out, is still a vital component for determining our own educational destiny. As long as your board decisions are based on the premise that all of our students deserve the best education we can afford, and it is our duty to provide that education, I have no doubt that our school district will be successful going forward, so. And thank you all for your, your...
He can't even say my name, right? The final time has come. So I just wanna say that it has been my pleasure, it's been my honor to serve the Beacon City School District for the past four years. It has been an experience for me. When I sat on the other side, I spoke to the board members that were here and pretty much, you know, laid everything on the table. And what I learned was that when I went to new board members training, is that the Board sets policy. And so it definitely rerouted my thinking and allowed me to see things from a different perspective. And so I have placed myself in a position to always think about policy first as a board member, because that's what I was sworn in to do, and not try to run the district. And so I am, I'm excited about being a part of bringing Dr. Landau on board. Kristen, thank you for your kind words. I know that I can be a tough cookie, but I think that perception is one thing. When you perceive things of people, you may say to yourself that this person is this way or that way, but when you take the time out to get to know the person on a personal level, speak to them, try to understand their viewpoint and their lens, it can develop into a positive relationship. So I thank all of you for that, because I know that our relationship has not been the best. I know I am very vocal. Whether you agree with me or disagree with me, I'm going to say my piece. And I appreciate that most of you have said your piece. Anthony, you know, it's, it's been a ride, I'm, I'm gonna miss you. He has challenged me the most, and he has pushed me to grow, so I, I totally appreciate you. Georgia, you have been my sidekick, you have supported me, you've taught me. I think when I requested to sit next to you was because I really needed to learn and understand the process. I never wanna speak out of turn, but I am going to advocate for children, I think to the day I die. And so I did not run for reelection because my husband took a job that takes him away six days a week. And so my son is 17, he is the only one left in the home, because my two daughters have graduated, and they are further in their education. And so he is my first priority, so I must now spend my time being a full-time mom to him while my husband is out of the house. And so my son said, "Are you gonna start making policy here in the house now?" I said, "Yeah, I'm just gonna be as active as I've always been, and I will not disappear." You guys, you know, Emery, I appreciate you, I always salute you. Through the tough times, you've always smiled, you, you hung in there, and so I appreciate that. I think that people need to take and value the work that people put into the community, whether it's small. It was a big contribution. If we all do a little, no one has to do a lot. And so I take that from Wayne Griffin, who teaches Beacon Hoops every summer. And to you, Kelly, I, you know, I appreciate you always. I'll, I'll go above and beyond, you know, to make sure that you are appreciated, you spend some long nights here, and you always did it with a smile on your face. And so it may have been some tough times for us, but I think that as a team, we, we made it. And so to the new people that I got to meet, Meredith, and, and Mike, and Kristen, and, and Craig, you know, again, we may not have seen eye to eye before, but I think that we learn to appreciate and respect one another, and that's, that's what's important, that the community see that people who don't always see things the same way can still come together to make the, the rules and regulations stick. And that's what our jobs are. So always follow policy, never follow, you know, what the outside world is saying, live by the books. And with that said, that's it.
Alright. So I'd also like to thank the retirees and the new tenure, that people have a lot of shoes to fill. We're losing some great people from the district, so. Just a couple of householding items. We do have the New York State School Boards Convention coming up October 24th through the 26th, so just get your clocks thinking if you're gonna wanna attend. It's in New York City this year. August 3rd, there's the Mid Hudson School Study Council. It's at Monroe Woodbury. There's some presentations from lawyers about educational law. And on June 28th, at the Thayer's Hotel, there's a NISBA Welcome for Board Members. That's at 6:00 to 8:00. So it's always nice at the Thayer. So if you wanna go, let Kelly know. Sooner rather than later about the Thayer, because it's June 28th, which is next week. I skipped the superintendent report unconsciously, but I think it was subconsciously I did it, because he forgot about that I was gonna say something about the board.
Turn your sweetest.
So we'll go back to the superintendent report.
I just may have to make it really long.
I'll kick you. I'll kick you.
Uh, just a couple of things coming up in some future meetings. At, at the, uh, July 16th meeting, we will update, uh, the board and community on some of the things we're doing, uh, from the safety audit. We hope to be appointing our director of, uh, security at that meeting as well. So there's a lot of work and some training that's happening this summer, and we'll talk about that July 16th. The, uh, BOSIS thing that has been mentioned, the BOSIS Capital Project. We, um, the BOSIS meeting is on Wednesday this week, where they will come up with the resolution. So we could not vote on a resolution tonight because we couldn't, you know, do without their resolution, so we will be doing that vote on July 16th. I think it would make sense, uh, with three of the board members that we get into the nitty-gritty details that night, uh, for that vote, but essentially, you know, it was, uh, it was summarized really well by Bill and Craig. Uh, we're just simply, the board is, uh, potentially passing a resolution about the financing. The voters of Dutchess County decide the fate of this project on December 11th of next year. Uh, my opinion, as is said before, it is highly needed. Um, but ultimately, voters in Dutchess will decide, so we'll do that on July 16th as well. Uh, so we, we felt, when Anthony and I talked about this meeting, we felt that focusing on, uh, the workshop for tenure recognition, retirement recognition, made more sense than, than getting into that. Uh, so, so it just also, uh, I in no way can be any more eloquent than some of the eloquence already shared tonight, but, uh, I just wanted to, uh, thank Georgia, Kenya, and Bill for being part of the group, uh, that brought me here. It means a lot, um, to have, uh, to have your confidence back then and, and your confidence now. And I told my, I'm pretty close with my old superintendent, and, uh, I told him that three people who, uh, three pe- three of the people who brought me here, uh, decided not to run again, and he was like, "You are in serious trouble." So hopefully that's not the case, but, uh, but I do really appreciate, uh, your, your guidance and support over this year. Uh, Georgia was providing a lot of history whenever it was needed. Kenya, it has been said a bunch of times, but I, I personally have always appreciated, uh, your advocacy for students as well. It's something that, uh, is very motivating for me. And, and Bill, I think, uh, your guidance has best summed up. I won't get into the details of this, but early in my tenure here, um, Bill sent me a very, uh, a very eloquent, brief email about, uh, a decision I was making, and he just said, "This is a wise course of action." And I, when I read that, I thought, okay, he's been on the board for 23 years. I am doing this. So, uh, just thank you, and, uh, thank you to the whole board for a good first year. This is, uh, the last June meeting. And in a few days, we gather in Dutchess Stadium for graduation, uh, for our high school, and so that is really exciting. Uh, it dawned on me a few days ago that I've been in districts for the last 20 years that do high school graduation indoors in really large stadiums, and this is outdoors.
Yes.
So that means I get to worry about the weather one more time this year, so I can't, I, I, I stayed away from it today, but I'm gonna start looking at the five-day work ethic tonight and start assessing over that, but I'm excited about that. I got to experience kindergarten graduation as a parent today, which was super cool. So, uh, it, it's been a great first year. Really excited to put it in the books and get working on, uh, year two. Anthony, thank you so much for the time.
All right, so we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, the use of consent agenda from the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters, which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate that the item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Any member want to point anything from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda 11.01, 11.02 through... 11.26. Second, Kenya? Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried, eight zero. I need a motion to approve addendum item 12.01 and 12.02.
So moved.
Meredith, is there a second?
Second.
Kristen? Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried, eight zero. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss unemployment history. I said 12.01 and 12.02. Addendum items 12.01 and 12.02. Do I need to read the resolution again or? I need a motion to adjourn to executive session, um, to review the employment history of a particular individual, and the board is not expected to take action after executive session.
So moved.
Kristen? Hang a second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried, eight zero. Thank you, everybody.